Good evening. It is my honor to present Mrs. Kathy A.G. as our Staff Member of the Month for Arlington Elementary. There were several nominations for her and her peers describe her as engaging, passionate for students. She creates a welcoming environment in her classroom. She instills a love of learning. She goes above and beyond to make sure that her students are learning and growing. We also had several parents who have really great things to say about Mrs. A.G. She is amazing. We love her and think she is the best teacher. She is so kind and we have nothing but positive things to say. And my child loves being in her class and comes home excited about what he has been learning. We are definitely blessed to have Mrs. A.G. at Arlington Elementary.
All right, I'm proud to introduce Mr. Trevor Branko as our Student of the Month. Trevor is a kindergartner in Mrs. LaFavers' class. He's a phenomenal example of our Wildcat way. He's a constant source of positive energy for everybody. Mrs. LaFavers had this to say about Trevor. "I nominated Trevor for Student of the Month because he is a diligent student, who exhibits responsible behavior in the classroom, and always puts his best effort into work. Trevor is a great leader and role model for all his classmates, and he always leads by a great example." Trevor and his sister are two of our Walkers and they come up to the office every morning and every afternoon. And he is just always a joy. He makes us all laugh. He's always polite and responsible. He always seems to make everybody smile. So we're very lucky to have Trevor and his family at Arlington. Your address is in Trevor.
Mr. Russell.
Good evening. So I'm going first. Hi. I'm going to start out with our Employee of the Month, Mrs. Kelly Kors. Kelly was nominated by several of her colleagues at Millroy. And she has a huge heart for her students. Sometimes she works with kids that maybe struggle in math or reading, but she's very patient, kind, and has a positive attitude that's contagious. Mrs. Kors constantly displays an upbeat, cheery attitude with her smile and welcoming presence. And you know, at the H.R. Summit in January, we talked a lot about our schools and the culture in our schools. And Mrs. Kors, her name always comes to mind whenever I think about somebody who creates that culture. And we're just very happy to have her. Some of her colleagues said she contributes to our positive culture at Millroy. She can often be found in the hallway, the first thing in the morning, helping students find their way to the cafeteria for breakfast or tie shoes. Her words of encouragement to students and staff are appreciated by everyone. Kelly has attended to details, even the little details that others may often overlook, but she knows that they're important to the student's success. Mrs. Kors is a valuable asset to our staff. She has assisted in leading professional development opportunities. She's readily available to provide support and guidance whenever needed. Mrs. Kors continuously seeks to learn new ways to help students and staff and is the epitome of being a lifelong learner. I'm very lucky to have Mrs. Kors. And now we have CJ Chase. CJ is our Student of the Month. And he's always giving his personal best every day. And Mrs. French nominated CJ, and she says, "He's one of the most respectful students I've ever had in class. I can always count on him to do the right thing, and he demonstrates positive behavior for others to look up to." CJ has an amazing personality and loves to share stories and historical facts with the class. He has an incredible work ethic and he strives for excellence in everything he does. CJ's always fully engaged in class, loves to participate in all subjects. He's an excellent peer support for his classmates. You can also, or can often find him helping others after his own work is finished. As his teacher, I love that no matter what, I can always count on CJ to have a big smile on his face and a great story to tell. And I will add to that that I can't go in Mrs. French's classroom unless I get greeted by the door by CJ, and I always get a big hug, so that means a lot to me too. Congratulations.
Mrs. Ellis.
It's my privilege to honor Graham Littleton. He's just one of the sweetest kindergarteners you'll meet. And his smile is just brightens everyone's day. Share that with everyone. His teacher says, "Graham has worked so hard academically and behaviorally. He comes into school each day with his smile on his face and ready to learn. He is always a leader in every group he is in, and he is never afraid to jump in and help his peers when they need it. Also, he has worked at making good decisions. He has learned to step back and think about his decisions when he needs to make them. Graham is eager to please and wants to learn and is a friend to many." Congratulations, Graham.
It's my honor to honor Ms. Mason. Shelby Mason joined us this year for her very first year. And I have an entire page of compliments and shout-outs from staff members. So I'm only going to read just a few. But one of the things that everybody seems to notice is she's ready every day to present fun and engaging lessons to make her class fun. Her students love her greatly and it shows that she loves them too. She has a bright smile and a bubbly personality that is contagious. And she knows how to build positive relationships. She's not afraid to ask questions or even ask for help. She's willing to share resources and ideas with anyone who asks. And overall, once again, her smile brightens up the day. She's very conscientious about making her lessons engaging, rigorous, as well as following state standards. She searches for good lessons and asks others for suggestions as well. She makes learning fun and exciting. You hear this over and over again. She has created relationships with her students as well as with students in other classes and other grades. She has taken on more than just teaching responsibilities. Ms. Mason has served as a coach for volleyball and basketball at BMRS, as well as boys' and girls' basketball coach at RES. And if you watch her coach and teach, you will see that she truly has a love for her players and her students, as well as a joy for her job and sports. She's one of the most positive and happy people that I know, and I look forward to her smile every day. Congratulations.
Mr. Brown.
Zayden Abel, come on up. We have the pleasure tonight to recognize two fine, young eighth graders. Quite frankly, he is a sharp dressed man. Zayden Farley and Abel Coon were nominated by Connie Amos. Jeff, you probably know him. Nominated these two students for the respect shown to the American and Indiana flags flown outside of the RMS daily. They're always checking the weather before they put the flags out. In the event of unexpected rain or snow, they are first to notice the precipitation and remove the flags immediately. Zayden Abel are two respectful young men and assets to the B.R.M.S. student body. We also have one of our traits, be respectful. And these are two, one of the most respectful young men that I think I've ever met in my time in administration. So very proud of them. In fact, it was, what, second period today? I think when you went out there, second period, you said, "I gotta go get the flag, it's been raining." And so they set them out, they let them dry. They do a tremendous job. And we always greet every one of our kids in the morning with little fist bumps. Not only do they get it once, but they make it intentional in their part to come back and tell us, give us a fist bump again and tell us, "Have a good day." So Joe Lindberg, congratulations.
And I have the pleasure of introducing Mrs. Anna Angle. She is our Algebra I and Advanced Math teacher. One of her colleagues said, "Anna is always willing to give up her prep period to help students who are struggling, always willing to join in on staff meetings and other P.L.C. times, even though she only teaches in the morning, is truly a team player." If you walk into Anna's classroom, you will see, I mean literally, every student is engaged. She is walking the room, she's asking questions. Her students respect her. And we couldn't be any more thrilled with the teacher that Anna is, and we're grateful to have her in our building. So congratulations.
Mr. Cook.
That's a great idea.
We wanted to share some of our comment sheets with everybody up here tonight just because tonight, and I know we call this "Give Me Something Good", but we're not going to give you anything good tonight. We're going to give you a few great things and something really phenomenal. That's what we're going to give you tonight, okay? But tonight's a really special night, we believe. But I want to start off by introducing our Staff Members of the Month. Mr. T.R. Campbell and Mrs. Heather Campbell, come on up. Where there's T.R., there's Heather. Where there's Heather, there's T.R. They're a dynamic duo. You see them in the band together. You see them in the pep band. And they know what I feel about the pep band. They know I absolutely love what they do, how they do it, how they get the kids engaged in things. And they had eighty, how many, eighty-one kids in your band this year? Seventy, what was it close to? Seventy-one, seventy-one kids in the band this year, which is phenomenal. They've got the personalities that people draw to. Kids draw to these two. They absolutely love them. And I'm going to let Mrs. Meek and Mr. McCarty say a few things about them, but I will tell you one thing about this. The one thing I love, I've been to the two basketball sectional meetings this year, and it always comes down to a question of who's bringing their band. But this is the way the question gets phrased at both meetings. Okay, everybody, who, besides Rushville, is bringing their band? Because they know Rushville's coming. And if you didn't see what they did at the boys' sectional, they played together with the Greensburg band. They actually played a couple songs together. And then Greensburg went back over to the other side. The funny thing was, is that I don't think they knew what to do when our kids started playing. So their kids just started dancing to our music. It was great, but it was great. And that's just what they did. They're infectious, but I'm going to let these guys talk a bit.
All right, I get the honor of going over a few things that our staff had to say about Mr. T.R. Campbell. And I want to echo a little bit what Mr. Cook said. I've been able to be in a lot of gyms through my career. I can honestly say that there is no band better than State than ours. And you want to talk about enhancing the environment and the experience of games. And you guys work incredibly hard. I mean, you know, how many times in the last couple of years have you played a girls' game in the afternoon and been back at a boys' game at night? And the other thing I love is, you know, we've got a lot of kids involved in band, but not only are they involved in it, but they're passionate about it. And I think that speaks tremendous volumes to people like you guys. So I want to read just a couple of things that our staff said. "You're such a positive influence on so many lives, including my own two children. I will never forget the band trip to Disney last year. When you got up on the bus, we're leaving the hotel to go to one of the parks, and gave a very heartfelt speech about service. You gave examples of different people that had worked hard and would be working during the day to make their experience in the park memorable. I got teary-eyed because it was such an earnest speech and you even made me stop to think as well. You had everyone on the bus's attention, and I truly believe they took what you said to heart. That is just one of the many examples of your positive influence on students' lives. I could go on for days about how wonderful you and Heather are." So I think that when you've got kids wanting to get off the bus and go to Disney, and they're locked in on you, I think that says a tremendous amount about you, T.R. So congratulations.
And then just a couple of things about Heather Campbell. I just want to say, every month I ask for comments, and you can see Mr. and Mrs. Campbell both have two pages of comments that teachers are responding with that want to talk about how amazing they are. "I love that my girls and your students call you mom. That is one of the biggest compliments anyone can get. You are their protector, their comfort, and their joy. They know you will love them unconditionally, but at the same time, you will hold them accountable for their actions. Thank you for being an amazing mom. Thank you for being my friend." Another person, you talked about how, you know, there's seventy-nine, is that what you said? Seventy, seventy-one? "Heather and T.R. are simply the best. When they took over the band program, they inherited about thirty students. Look at their band program now, and you'll see what great teaching and great teachers can accomplish. I am proud to call in my colleagues and friends. They put in countless hours that no one knows about, and I always tell them they're working too hard. The Rush County community is better because the Campbells came to town. Like I said, simply the best." And all of these comments are like that. So that's why we wanted to make sure you had that in your packet so you can take the time to read through all of your comments. So another round of applause for Mrs. Campbell.
Now, before I bring our students up, like I said, I'm going to tell you a lot of great things that are happening. There's so many kids that we could nominate, so many people that we could nominate for this every single month. It's amazing. But Lena Adams, one district in speech last weekend is going to the Nationals this summer. So that was a huge accomplishment. And we also, this Saturday, we have six members of our speech team that will be competing in the state speech meeting. So they qualified last, or two weekends ago for the state meeting. So that's an exciting. I-STAR Bandplay coming up Thursday night. Mr. T.R. Campbell is one of our teachers that is represented, that was picked by one of our I-STAR students, so he's going to be there as well. Oh, and by the way, I sent you an email with stuff I need set up on the stage. I just sent it to see me. So wanted you to see that. Okay. I want to bring up four amazing young people. Dana Durbin, Izzy Pavy, Carter Barnes, and Adriana Apodaca. Or Adriana, as Mrs. Meek likes to call her.
I actually put an A on that word.
I'm going to, I'm going to, before I get into speaking a little bit about why the four of them are standing before you right now, one of the biggest reasons, I'm going to let Mrs. Meek and Mr. McCarty tell you something about them as individuals and why they're deserving of this also as individuals.
First up, Dana Durbin. And again, comments from teachers, I'm just going to read a few. "Dana is always upbeat and positive. If she ever has a bad day, you can't tell. She has been a vital asset to the Lions Live and to the Roar in helping get everything done for our shows and the radio station to be a success. I can always count on her to have the job done and then picking up the slack for others just to make sure we have successful shows and radio station. Dana is an excellent leader and always gets the job done."
Say a few things to you about Izzy really quick. "I do not know the two young ladies, but their concern, compassion, and love shown to their classmates is what these two young ladies have displayed throughout this project. And this is something we're going to talk about in a few minutes. But I think it already says a lot that this teacher you don't even have in class, and this is what she recognizes, okay? What a great way to show love and respect to your friends, classmates, community, and families who have suffered this loss." The next one, Isabella has helped our football program as a manager for the last few years. I've been very appreciative of what she's done for Rushville Football, whether it's been filming practices or games, helping with Game Day, or helping Dana and other managers. Izzy has done an amazing job. Keep chasing greatness."
Carter Barnes. "Carter is wonderful to have in class and has an exceptional work ethic. He goes above and beyond to help out other physics students who need it. Physics, that is a tough class, so if you are offering help for that, that is amazing. Carter is a tremendous representative of this school, community, and our Rushville Football Program. He is hardworking, dedicated, and always looking to help others. Carter can always be counted on and is a tremendous leader. Keep chasing greatness."
Adriana, and don't worry, I'm going to let Mrs. Meek get this right. She can pronounce your name, all right? "Adriana has a great sense of humor. He seems fun to be around, he's very respectful and a nice young man. It does not surprise me that he is one of the four students in what they've accomplished. Adriana is a fantastic representative of this school, community, and our Rushville Football Program. He is always looking to help others, hardworking and dedicated to what he is involved with. Adriana has continued to develop into a great leader." All right, congratulations.
Okay. I told you I was going to bring you something absolutely incredible and phenomenal tonight, and this is kind of it. Over thirty years in education, and I think those of us that have been in education for a long time, we have those drawers in our desk where we keep things. We may print off a nice email that somebody sent us, or we may keep a card that somebody gave us, and we just keep those. So when we're having those tough days, we pull those out and we like to read those, you know, to remind us a little bit that, hey, I'm not so bad, you know? But I always look for those things that kids do that are bigger than themselves. And I'm going to be honest with you. Never in thirty years have I had students come to me with an idea that not only was it an idea that they've carried out and it has gone beyond belief that is much bigger than themselves. RCHS has suffered some losses this year. We have suffered some tragedies. And it has not been easy. It has not been easy on our staff, it has not been easy on our students, and it has not been easy on me as the leader of the building, to be honest with you. Hasn't been easy on these kids either. In December, these two young ladies came to me with an idea. And it was an idea to memorialize two of our students that we have lost this year. And I said, "Well, what are we going to do? We're going to collect caps and we're going to make benches." And as they said, t-shirts are nice, bracelets are nice, they're good. Post-it notes on lockers, they're all great memorials, but they go away. They wanted something that was forever. They wanted something that could live on in the place of two young people whose life is perpetual. And I didn't know what to say. I'm looking at Dana and going, "Are you serious? This, this is why I do what I do. This reminds me why I do what I do every single day. It's more than math, it's more than English, it's more than science and all those things. It's about creating good humans, and it's about humans doing big things." So as you all know, we have collected caps. We thought it was going to take us a semester. It has taken us two months. Not even that, less than a month. And we met our goal. And now they're in the middle of cleaning and separating and doing all the grunt work for this. And we got to take it down to Evansville, pick up the benches and do some... So anyway, I asked Dana to write something up a few weeks ago about the project. And I just want everybody to hear from her own mouth what it is that she wrote.
Hello, my name is Dana Durbin. This year, as many of you know, RCHS has been struck by tragedy. We lost two of our students, Tanner Harrison and Valerie Tindall. Izzy Pavy and I were deeply affected by the passing of Tanner, and when we learned about Valerie's passing, we knew that something needed to be done. When Tanner passed, they had a Stinky Note Memorial for him on his locker, decorated with goodbyes and memories people shared with Tanner. When we all learned about Valerie's passing, a picture of her was put in senior circle on a table with a bouquet of flowers. As beautiful as they thought both of these memorials are, they are not permanent. When something as tragic as a child losing their life happens, we cannot just let it pass by. Izzy and I thought together, we brainstormed ways that we could commemorate the short and meaningful lives that Tanner and Valerie had, as well as give some form of peace to their families. We decided upon a memorial garden. Part of this project consisted of two benches. These two benches will be towards the outside of the memorial with two trees in the middle. These trees symbolize Valerie Tanner's legacy continuing to grow even though their lives ran short. The major part of this project was the benches. We wanted to make sustainable benches that would last for many years to come. After some research, Izzy and I discovered that we can make benches out of bottle caps. We believe that not only would this be a sustainable method of making the benches, but we would also be helping the environment and bringing our community together at the same time. Izzy and I stayed after school, bought containers, printed labels, and taped them to each of the containers to put in every classroom at RCHS. We then contacted all RCHS schools and asked them if they would help us in our collection. We then asked Carter Barnes and Adriana Apodaca to help us with our project because we would need more than two pairs of pants. It takes quite a few caps to make a bench. For both of them, we needed approximately nine hundred pounds of caps. So we quickly got the word out. We spread the word through Facebook, Lions Live, and Rushlight. We set the first collection date as January 8th, 2024, and let everyone know what caps were and were not acceptable, as well as ways they could get their caps to us, which came in four methods. From 2:40 to 3:30, we opened the high school to community members to drop off their caps on Wednesdays. Through Facebook, words spread quickly. Rushville Nutrition reached out to let us know it was okay if members of the community left their caps in their store if they could not make it to our designated time at the high school on Wednesdays. Connie Washburn, Tanner's grandmother, also reached out and told us that people could contact her personally to collect the caps. Arlington Elementary also let us know that people could drop off the caps to their school anytime during the school week. On January 8th, we collected a hundred and seventy pounds of caps from the community. For the first day of collections, we were ecstatic. My mother, Renee Durbin, has brought all the cats from Arlington Elementary to RCHS every Wednesday. These loads of cats consistently were truckloads that would sometimes spill over into my SUV. Melissa Branson then reached out to me. Her children attended Waldron Elementary School. Waldron Elementary is outside of Rush County school system, and they were wanting to be a part of our movement as well. After Waldron, Connersville residents stated that they were collecting as well, then Morristown and Shelbyville. Hearing this news was shocking to the four of us, especially Izzy and I. Knowing that something we started was moving outside of our small town was very humbling and emotional. After we were about two weeks into our collection, Stephen Harmer of the 812 reached out to us. He wanted to do a story on our cap collection. Soon we had shipments coming from Batesville, Greensburg, even all the way from Lawrenceburg, almost two hours away. Then one day, I got a package on my doorstep from Florida. My family in Largo, Florida, spread the word about our collection. We've had others saving a thousand miles away. We received about a total of forty pounds of caps in the mail from Florida. One month from the day we started collecting on February 8th, we had collected one thousand one hundred pounds of caps. Having this much success so quickly on our project is a lot to take in. To see how far it has grown, how happy it is me and the families of Tanner and Valerie, it is all just so gratifying to us. As I was writing this, we were weighing in the final caps and we had collected one thousand seven hundred fifty-three pounds in one month and six days. We are just four juniors at RCHS. When we started, we expected this collection to take about four months. The fact that we did it in under a month is just beyond words for us. We are also hung up on the idea that this project reaches other communities, counties, and even states. This journey has been truly blessing and emotional. We hope that with this memorial, we are able to bring a little bit of comfort to the families of Valerie and Tanner and anyone else who is close to them or affected by their deaths. There is still a lot of work to do. We have to sort through over a thousand pounds of caps, clean them, and take them down to Evansville, as well as work on landscaping and physically making this memorial. We hope that what we have done here will inspire others to be an active member in their community, help others, and try and be a better person. We've had so much success and fun with this project, we are wanting to do more projects for our community. We also hope that people in the community will understand that there's a group of people that will always be there for them, even if it is just a group of four high school students. Thank you to everyone who has played a role in this journey. If you brought caps to us on a Wednesday, if you dropped a load off to Rushville Nutrition, if you shared a Facebook post online, if you told a friend, if you saved even one cap, thank you. From the bottom of our hearts, we thank you. We pray that Valerie and Tanner are resting in an ever-haven place.
Okay, go.
We have a presentation by Richard Pavy, but I'm not really sure I want to record that. Wow.
This sure just takes...
It sure just takes one idea to change a life. Congratulations to those four students. Mr. Peters and I are here to honor two of some people that's very special to us. And I got to meet them very early on in my superintendency, and I have seen both these gentlemen work unbelievably, even setting on a bucket with a little paintbrush because there was a nick in a bus. Just impressed me. They care so much about our schools, they care about our kids coming to work or coming to school on time. They get up when we get up to make sure the buses are worn and everything is running. I've seen buses in other school corporations, and they sure don't look like ours. And these two gentlemen have taken great pride, and we cannot say thank you enough for what you do for our students, our bus drivers, and Rushville as a community. You want to add?
Let's pull these two guys up, and then I'll speak. Stan and Jamie, get on up. So Stan and Jamie, Stan Manning, Jamie Carpenter, are simply just bus mechanics, right? Is that what we're gonna call you? I would rival them with any employee about being almost irreplaceable. And I know that's a dangerous term, but with their knowledge, with the service that they provide, and their approach, they are hard to beat. There are so many aspects of school that go unnoticed, and transportation is often one of them. We were talking about food service earlier, we talked about custodial service, we talked about instructional assistance. The list goes on and on. But these guys fill that role, and they always do it with a smile, and they show up every day, and they do the work without expecting anything in return. And that's a lost art with our society today. Tony Dungy wrote a book called, I think it was Quiet Strength, I think was the title of it, and it's about leadership, and it's about how you go about your business every day. And you don't make noise, you don't make waves, you just put in the time and you do the work. And these guys are examples of quiet strength. They do it for the kids, they do it for the right reasons, and they do it every day without getting any accolades or any acknowledgement. And personally, to me, as I came on, having school administrative experience but not really knowing much about transportation, they've always been supportive, they've always been loyal, and they've always been about the kids. And what more do you want than that from a school employee? Whether they're in transportation, or they're a teacher, or they're an administrator. So Stan, Jamie, you're the real deal. We appreciate you.
Four member comments. Mr. Davis.
I wish my luck.
Want to say a little bit about Stan and Jamie. Known them all my life. Both have them, Jamie from first grade on. They're just good, awful good, hard-to-beaten and hard-working, and they're never procrastinating about nothing. I drive some of the buses. You guys just don't, can't believe how good shape they are. Thank you guys for me. The four high school students, wow, I don't know how to say anything else. But also, needs to go a little farther than that, your parents. Wow, how you bring good people. And that's what it takes, and that's what happened so much, in my opinion. The parents need to step up, and these parents have absolutely stepped up. They're just good people. So I applaud you guys, the parents.
Congratulations to everybody in order tonight. It's great to see how this program has evolved since Jim started it, what, a year and a half, year and a half now? I don't know that this was his vision, because it started out with a kid or a teacher or, you know, one of the staff members. But it's great to see how it's evolving, and the effort you guys are putting into it. Really honor everybody that goes above and beyond. So thank you all for that, and thanks for a great winter season, I guess I would say, here at school. I know it's a tough one, not many breaks, it's pretty long. And I'm sure you're all looking forward to spring break, so enjoy it. Thanks again.
I'm gonna talk about a graduate. I had the honor yesterday of listening, I didn't understand a word of it. But Sarah Ennis was a graduate of RCHS, and yesterday, which is Ms. Julianne Ennis's daughter, she had to defend her thesis to get her PhD, and she was successful in that effort, so she will now be known as Dr. Sarah Ennis. So congratulations to you guys.
Congratulations.
I have been in the doctor, in the dentist's chair most of the afternoon, I'm gonna get my mouth break.
On my way in this evening, I was thinking about how fortunate we are to live in the community that we live in. We have opportunities here for our students that the boys that come through my school can only bring up. I lost another student to gun violence. Since I've been working at the prison, that's six now that I've lost to gun violence. And when I see young people like you guys doing what you're doing, it makes me so happy. And it makes me so proud that we live in this safe place. For the most part, we live in a safe place, and we've got good parents, we've got good kids, we've got good opportunities. We're fortunate. And I just, I was thinking about how fortunate we were before you even got me crying again on it. But, you know, was it the Pavy kid, which one said, "We're just four juniors at RCHS." You are not just four juniors. You are four juniors at RCHS who have done a great thing, and I'm really, really proud of you guys.
The state started a routine and necessary process of updating our school system books for the last two years. Even though it's no big deal to the state, it's always a stressful time to our wonderful treasure. So, Ms. Kramer, I want to say thank you for everything you do. I know your world has been turned upside down and interrupted from your normal process. They gave these people paychecks and paid our bills. But smile, get to stay out here as soon as possible, just gonna go from there, but thank you for your extra effort. First, your cook, two Sundays ago, the FFA showed up at my parish, okay? Must have shaken my wife because they took her favorite's place to sit. They did come in force, and they were well-received, and it was just so nice to see such a group of energetic, wonderful people show up at our parish. And I want you to pass that along so that they tell people that they are more than welcome to turn anytime that they want. Thank you. And with that, we're gonna take a break, five minutes, five minutes, those magic words. Five minutes for pictures and discussion, and then we'll get back to our meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Jameson to send iron serve.
Alrighty. Picked it up pretty good, but donations, we had a hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents from PSI Exile Sorority in Zeta T A U Milroy to the Milroy Elementary Kindergarten Class Memory Books. Also a hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents from the Milroy Economic Development Corporation to Milroy Elementary for the Kindergarten Class Memory Books. Out of State and Overnight Field Trips, the RCHS FFA to Washington DC Leadership Conference. They are going to be a part on June fourth, twenty twenty-four and return June ninth, twenty twenty-four. This is for six students and two adults. I seek the Board's approval for the minutes of February. Board Member and Personnel report donations, out of state and overnight field trips, claims of payroll.
I have motion by Mr. Amos, do I hear second? Second, and Mr. Carmody, discussion. Carry now, I'll call for vote, all those in favor say aye. All votes the same, motion carries. Energy Harness Audit Sir.
Yes. Per our contract with Energy Harness, they are required to do an analysis comparing eight months of electric bills from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. As you will see in your packet, the analysis discovered that Rush County Schools has saved two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars this past year in energy costs. It is projected to save over one million dollars in four years. I appreciate the Board's forward thinking and applying these energy-saving methods to our district. After we repay the initial cost of the project, these savings will go directly to impact the operations account. No action on this, I just wanted to give you an update, you had asked for the audit, that was in your pocket, and that we are saving money by going with Energy Harness.
Consider the appropriate, the approval of dedication of the RCHS Baseball Softball Complex Diamonds to the Rush County Council of Clubs.
Yes, the Athletic Department would like to dedicate these diamonds to the hard work and dedication through the years from the following groups. The Elks, the Knights of Columbus, the American Legion Post One Five-O, the Eagles, Moose, and the VFW. A tentative date is set for Thursday, May ninth, with a rain date of Monday, May thirteenth. Is planned to dedication of the Baseball Board approved, based on our approval. I seek the Board's approval to the dedication of the RCHS Baseball Softball Complex and the Diamond to Rush County Council of Clubs.
I have a motion by Cam, is second by Ron. Angie, sorry. Discussion. My discussion is thank you for bringing us to. Thank you, I really appreciate that. Any other discussion? Carry now, call for the vote, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, the same, motion carries. Consider the approval of providing sixth grade athletes the opportunity to participate in Rush Middle School Track and Field Team.
Yeah, over the last several years, there's been a significant decrease in athletic participation in track and field. Other nearby school corporations allow their sixth grade students to compete in track and field at the middle school level. I seek the Board's approval to allow the sixth grade student athletes additional opportunities to compete and develop in their first year attempting this sport.
Discussion. I hear a motion. I have motion by Mr. Jackman, second by Mr. Amos, discussion.
I think this is a great idea.
I agree, I agree.
Can we just do it where like any sixth grade where a coach is willing to do it? And so they don't have to come to us each time, like if they want to let sixth graders do golf, tennis. I mean, if, if the numbers allow.
Yeah.
Like, if we got enough basketball players, we don't need sixth graders.
Right, but if there's an opportunity where we're not having good enough participation, we can make a broad.
The smaller ones are, that don't have as many, they could open it up if the coach wants to. Coach and principal agree to it.
So I will seek your approval to open up additional opportunities for sixth grade athletes when needed and when called upon. This will be a standing order.
Yeah, that way they don't have to come each time.
You don't give a change in motion.
I'd make a motion that we change the original motion to what he said.
Discussion.
That's why, I mean, that's why like they have to, it's not just automatic, they'd have to still get approval of the principal and superintendent, but instead of them having to come to us and have to do it in other future sports.
My only question would be better off so we don't open a can of worms, keep it to individual sports like golf.
Based on need? I would base it on need. So you're not cutting.
That's why I'm not going to have sixth graders playing football unless you don't have enough seventh graders to play football, then you could open it up, or basketball. It's, it's as needed, you know, they gotta justify why they're doing it, which like they did.
The track is enough place, you have enough.
Yeah, like football, I mean, they already have that they're, they're playing or basketball. I don't know that those would need it, but like I said, it's, that way it's done. And as long as the superintendent and principal agree there's a need to let sixth graders participate, then do it and not have to come to us every time. Or we can still have them come each time, but.
Well, it's kind of hard, like right now, it's March.
Right.
They're already started probably in North Track practice. I don't know, weather's been pretty nice, maybe a bit outside, so you don't want to squash.
Well, like golf, you know, they have a great year and they've got fourteen kids, great. But if they've only got six, okay, well, let's, you know, they could, they could go ahead and opt to open it up and not have to wait till the next month when we.
Any more discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor say aye. All votes the same. The Corson Fire Management Issue.
Um, after doing some strategic planning and analysis, in the past several years, it was discovered that Rush County Schools was using five different fire management and protection companies. Uh, based on our review, it is our recommendation to go with Corson Fire Management as our sole provider. We have looked at the proposal for fire inspections, alarms, fire panels, and fire extinguishers, and we will save substantial amount of money, along with knowing that if there was ever an issue, we have one company to call. We actually met with Corson Fire yesterday, had some further conversations. So I seek the Board's approval to have Corson as our sole fire management company.
Motion by Mr. Amos, second.
Second.
By Miss Coon, discussion.
I weigh mine.
Discussion. Call for vote, all those in favor say aye. Any objections? I understand my son, so.
Uh, next is the Tennis Court Parking Lot Project. Last year, we had budgeted two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, five-hundred dollars for the resurfacing of our tennis courts that are desperately needed out of the twenty twenty-two Geo Bond. You have already approved Pro Track and Tennis to resurface the tennis courts here in the summer of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we have also received a bid for a new lighting package on the existing poles, and those are to be installed here in March twenty twenty-four. I'm also going to amend this, we had some ideas about a parking lot, but we feel that the rest of that money could be used better for our students in our classrooms. So I am asking the Board's approval to just approve Energy Harness, which we've already seen the savings in the L D, LED lighting at the tennis courts.
So this is just for lights, no?
Lights in tennis court.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, I'll move.
Second. I have a motion by Miss Coon, a second by Mrs. Jackman, discussion. Does that take care of your shed issue too?
I have not received official word about the shed, but the good news is there's a possibility of, um, a shed being donated to the tennis, um, to replace our existing one that the wind and the snow blow through, um, so it's desperately needed, but it's a community member who played tennis for Rushville, um, their family own a mortuary here in town. So, uh, he's working together for a community grant, uh, with that, and we're, we're just excited that, uh, he's working on that for us to give back to the kids and the community. But I don't have it officially to put on the donation issue.
Discussion.
To clarify, we were talking about putting in a tennis court parking lot, and we discussed that that money would be better served going into either the elementary or the junior high, and all of the bajillion dollars worth of repairs that we need in those places wants versus needs.
Any other discussion? Carry now, call for the vote, all those in favor say aye. All votes the same, motion carries.
I would like to add one other thing on that, it is nothing to vote on, but through the collaborative effort of our tennis coaches, our athletic director, principals, you know, a major decision is what's this tennis court's going to look like? Well, we're going to have red tennis courts with gray around the boundaries, uh, it was a unanimous vote. Uh, we're going to have some graphics on there, we're going to make it look sharp, so, so we're all going to be very proud.
Resolution for compensation to board members.
Sorry, Miss Amy.
I'm not sorry, I'm not sorry.
Uh, just recently, the Indiana School Board Association came out with an update of the per diem rates for school board members. As you will see in your packet, the school board commissioners for the Indiana, Indianapolis Public Schools approved an increase of per diem rates on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. The maximum rates for twenty twenty-four are a hundred-and-fifty dollars for regular meetings and seventy-five dollars for other meetings such as special meetings, executive sessions, and committee meetings. I seek the Board's approval to adopt this as outlined in your packet.
And this would be above and beyond the two-thousand dollars.
Correct. We'll get this retroactive to the superintendent's charge. Why, was that a loan, proselytism? Thought I'd live down here. I don't know, the auditors are still here, Ron. They might find out.
Just to know what the board, what the board's pleasure was, I mean, if, if we think the two-thousand of being paid now is satisfactory, then we can leave alone, we don't have to do this. If you want to be paid, have the board pay for every meeting, it doesn't have to be a hundred-and-fifty, it just can be up to a hundred-and-fifty, per regular meeting, up to seventy-five for an executive session or other meeting.
So this, this isn't added on to every meeting?
It's above and beyond the two-thousand dollars.
Two-thousand dollars, and you get a hundred-and-fifty, up to a hundred-and-fifty per meeting.
We don't need to do that.
No, I don't, we don't need to do that.
I didn't get on this board to make money.
Nope.
And like, I'm like you, I give away most of the money I get, I give away to somebody else, so it's not going to make a difference to me. I, it was just, it was brought to us that this is an opportunity, if we wish to do it, it doesn't have to be done, we can say no to that, and if that's what you want to do, then we just go on.
No, thank you.
Bus driver. Bus driver trainer pay for transportation department.
Um, we've been very blessed in the past several years to have an in-house trainer in our transportation department. Uh, this individual starts with new drivers and works to get them ready to pass their driver's skill test at a certified facility. Mr. Peters, you want to add anything before I ask for their approval?
Sure, um, we're, we're asking the Board to increase the fee from five, for the, the rate we pay from five-hundred to seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I just want to voice out a couple things. Uh, we are fortunate to have an in-house person, not every district has that, and we found that when we priced it out of the district, it is quite costly and inconvenience, and an inconvenience. Also, uh, I don't foresee like a bunch of drivers lining up that have driven a semi for their whole life knocking on our door to drive a bus. If we recruit those people, we're going to have people that, um, don't have much skill in driving, um, a large yellow vehicle. So that means there's more time and more hours committed to that in-house person to do the training than we needed to do in the first place. So as we think ahead in the future, um, not only for this role that is currently filled by someone that may not do it forever, and we look into the future of how to position our district well for the transportation department, I politely ask that you approve this motion to increase it from five-hundred to seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
And is that for like bus driver, they train?
Correct. That is, I'll go back to a new driver, the amount of hours that it could take from ground level to get them fluent could, could be quite a minimal.
I have a motion by Mrs. Coon, and a second by Mr. Carmody, any other discussion?
When this individual does this, he, after it takes time and does it, some people take a lot of training, some doesn't, but when they go to Indianapolis to take the test, they pass it.
Yes, we've had a high rate of success in passing it, and this person actually accompanies this individual when they go to the certified training facility.
Put in a lot of time.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a big commitment and a nice, um, nice asset for Rush County Schools.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor say aye. All votes the same, motion carries. Amendment to, oh no, Jessica covering the speaker's.
Yes. Um, Jessica Leon is already working at Benjamin Rush Middle School as an instructional assistant and is moving to cover Victoria Barker's maternity leave. Per our policy, uh, she, if she went to do this, she would be paid a prorated teacher's contract for the remainder of the maternity leave. With that, she loses, we do not pay for any insurance benefits, T R F, any of that. You are just subpay at that rate. So this would also cancel, like I said, it would cancel out her insurance benefits until September first, twenty twenty-four. I seek the Board's approval to approve this stipend in an amount of three-thousand and eighty dollars and fifty cents, which represents the difference of what remaining pay have been in the long-term sub minus the difference of what her remaining pay would have been if the study hall supervised her. This stipend would allow her to keep her insurance benefits. As we are looking to retain our teachers and the people that work for us, this is a special occasion, it's not something we're going to have all the time, and I also, Miss Leon is also enrolled in our Indiana Wesleyan Step Up Program to become a licensed teacher for Rush County Schools, so she is committed to our schools, I think we need to return the favor and be commended of her, so I seek your approval for that stipend.
I have motion by Mrs. Coon, a second by Mr. Carmody, discussion. Carry now, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, the same, motion carries. Amendment to Rush County Schools' travel policy.
I seek the Board's approval for a slight adjustment, we, last month, we did do a travel policy, uh, to give the superintendent the authority to increase a per diem amount per day for food from twenty-five dollars to a maximum of fifty dollars per day for conferences out of state. The amendment will also increase the amount of hotels that are close to the conference, providing three quotes, so they have to get three hotels and take obviously the cheaper of the three. In your packet, you saw some of the price and cost of hotels that, and it was more than what we had written in our travel policy. Um, ninety-eight percent of our conferences that we send people to are here in-state, so this is a very rarity, it's just out-of-state travel, and unfortunately, fortunately, we live in, in a state that is not that, it's not that expensive. Um, you know, a cheeseburger in San Antonio was about eighteen dollars, and that was at In-N-Out Burger. So, just, uh, I just seek your approval to allow me to, on these rare occasions, the authority to amend, amend the policy to a maximum of fifty dollars for per diem food.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Lyman, second by Mr. Carmody, discussion.
So in the instance you gave us, again, you know, because if, if I read it correctly, even what we have approved is hard for you to get the hotel. So in that case, when you know that quite a bit in advance, could you come to us and say, hey, this is what it's going to cost us, and then we approve it that way?
I could do that, yes.
Because, you know, yeah, you take three hotels and you take the lowest. Well, then, let's say the lowest is four miles away, and somebody got to pay for.
They got to pay for transportation, yeah.
And inconvenience, so, you know, in those, I mean, it just doesn't happen every month, so.
Right, I think it's something like, say, if we plan in advance, you're going to go here, bring it to you, let you take a look at it, vote on it.
On the exterior, the H R S, you're going to, but I think it's a good idea. This is what it's going to.
Yes, we can still, we can still do that, vote on it and stuff. Uh, we, we really need to dislengage for our wonderful auditors. So, uh, we're trying to play a little catch-up to make this screen real life a little easier here.
If you want to do that.
But I definitely, we can definitely do that, because we want to be as screenless as possible and stuff.
Well, just more so we can help you get what you need versus you, you just grab them around.
Well, and saving money is fine, but not saving money is stupid.
Because like I said, Ubers aren't cheap either, you know, they've jacked it up as well. Yes, we can definitely do that.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, the same, motion carries. On the next one, are we tabling that one to your, so you have something to come back to us?
No, mine is just, I want to seek, uh, the approval to negotiate.
Ah, I'm sorry.
Um, cell phone tower at Milroy, um, as you know, we were approached last year about the possibility of a cell phone tower at Milroy Elementary. The site has finally come off hold for Verizon, and they still would like to, for us to move forward. Uh, they are wanting to enter into a ground agreement with Rush County Schools for a total of fifty years. I am seeking the Board's permission to move forward with negotiating on the ground. I am seeking the board's permission to move forward with negotiating on the ground lease with Southern Towers and Verizon.
So. Seven.
Wow. Jim Warner. I have a motion for Mr. Jackman.
Let the board.
Second by Mrs. Cooper. Discussion. Take it forward again. Any other discussion?
No, thank you.
So we'll negotiate on this and report back as we learn.
Yep, as we move through the process.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carries. Important dates. Not gonna read them, you guys can read yourself and go from there. Um, others, Mr. Peters.
I have nothing under other, that's a great thing. I mean, we got out in front of everything, so no last minute.
Any other reports, Mr. Peters?
I'm ready. Um, I'd like to just report to the board that uh we got through our bus inspections and our buses passed. Um, all is good there. Um, we do welcome the inspection process, just to identify some problems, but as Stan and Jamie were recognized, I didn't even go into the fact of bus inspections, how smooth they are. They they're just the best. Um, I'd also like to acknowledge uh Mr. David Angle on, he's announced his retirement from driving a bus. I mean, he drives a privately owned bus, but he still provides that service uh to the students of Rush County. Just I'll let you know that he's communicated that he's gonna finish up the year and finish and be done. Maintenance and grounds, um, it the weather has been warm, so it makes you think about spring sports. We invest a lot of assets into grass seed and what we call candy around our plate, uh around our department, trying to get the grass green and get it growing and softball complex, baseball complex. Um, just general grounds, uh trying to get grass green. And then we also talked about the tennis courts that I just uh, we're looking forward to having that finished. Um, and then lastly, we're working intensively with having an overhaul of our radio system. Uh, we had a meeting today, uh, there's a couple snacks, a couple things that we're working through, trying, working through, trying to get that done. And um, as I've talked about it, looking at a new food service director, um, that that's another part of our operations that we're looking at, so. Lastly, I I'd also like to acknowledge retirement from Phil Brash, who um he's our director, uh, or our custodial coordinator, uh, is his actual title. Um, Phil has been an asset to me, as I've only been here six months or nine months or whatever he's been, it feels like ninety years, but. Uh, I'd like to publicly thank Phil, he's been an asset for me. He's a fantastic human being and we appreciate his service and uh we'll work to find how we're gonna replace the job that he does for Rush County Schools, so thank you, Phil. Go with us.
On Mr. Anderson's retirement, are we taking that back as a employee route or is that gonna stay as a private?
Um, that will be a corporately owned route. Uh, there's, to really predict everything that's gonna happen, I need more time to see total retirements, just to give you, but we'll that that particular route and that particular bus will likely be owned by the corporation, so.
Okay, I know those are going to be obvious in the past, so.
Right, right.
Now, assuming that we go corporate, how many privately owned buses will it be?
Um, I anticipate that we will have three when we're done with this year. We'll have, we'll have three, yes.
Mr. Peters, anything else, sir?
No, not at this time. Not today.
Mr. Julian.
I have the um education, the operations, the debt service spreadsheets for you for the first two months. I don't have the projected in there yet, but that is the actual numbers that I have on there. And I also have a um interest of what each bank account has gotten for the first two months. Um, I thought I'd provide that for you. And the auditors, yep, everybody knows, they're here, they're gonna be leaving soon. And um, that exit um is supposed to be next Thursday.
Going. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson. Sorry.
Has the audit been okay?
As far as I know, yeah, uh, there's gonna be some things that they're gonna, they have already told me that there's findings, and we'll just have to go in and tell how we're gonna do corrective action for it, but I haven't been given those, you know, in paper yet.
Yeah. Do lots of hairdo apply?
No, not yet.
Question, it's an audit. Do we get fined, is there a chance of being fined for things at an audit? I know Nancy went through one last year. How's that stuff work exactly?
I'm learning right along with you.
My understanding is I think they give like a verbal, and then you have time to fix it, but then if you get a finding, then they can do something. But a lot of times they just want you to correct it, but they can take some grant money away.
Is it little things, I mean, nitpicky things?
Um.
It depends, I mean, the one idea.
I wanna be nice to my friends.
Was a question of of the, how we did the cafeteria jobs. Okay, they find, it can be anything, it's that simple to.
Our policies, we gotta follow our policies.
People sign up off for a check type of thing, it could work, be more complicated if they find we did something fraudulent.
You got graduation cohort information that they needed, make sure that's viable. Uh, we had a performance service, the contract we agreed to for the renovations that we've already done. All just, they're looking through everything, which is that's what they're supposed to do to find out. I think a lot of times, they're gonna slap you on the wrist, don't do that again, how you gonna fix this? And if you've done it, like this is your third audit, you're still making the same mistakes, then I think they get a little more rash with you.
Yeah, they, when when I've done it, they check, you have to like submit how you you corrected. And then when they do the audit again, if you didn't like follow it, um, then you could come get in trouble. Cause one idea was five years, they audited five years altogether. And it was like, well, you did it wrong this year, then you had to correct it and do it this way for the next year, but then the third year, it was completely different than the first two, so I was like, every year was different, it was crazy.
We're quality guys, we're doing it.
Well, those two ladies are the ones that are doing it.
That's why.
Thank you. Anything else from Mrs. Kramer? Mr. Anderson, sir.
All right. Okay, uh, U five champions, that's gonna be held on May second over at B R N S. And then our rain date will be on May third, I met with Melissa Winkler yesterday, and that's what works best for the high school. And so the high school students, athletes can help out with our athletes. Uh, we've had some new applications for special education teachers come in, which is a good thing. So we're looking at next year, trying to put, see where we will need people. And with that, we have our next county on April first for special education. Thank you to Brevin for already cracking on that. But uh, we're looking at that, and it'll give us projections for next year. And I'd like to thank Grant for meeting with all the special education, transportation on Monday. Uh, you know, what just looking at what our future needs will be, so thank you for that, and that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Mrs. Shrum.
Um, grants are moving right along, this, as you all know, um, is the last year for S R three. It ends September thirtieth. Um, by this summer, we should have all of those funds allocated. So that that has moved well in this process. Um, I had an opportunity to go to the National Ten One Conference last month in Oregon. Um, a wonderful opportunity, um, got to bring back a reading program um that Hayward, Wisconsin was using, and I shared that with our elementary principals. Um, the best was getting to hear Mrs. Peterson, who is the National Teacher of the Year. She was a very dynamic young woman. Um, by the time she was sixteen, she had lived in four different countries. So she has a lot of experience that many of us don't. Um, she was a college professor in Alabama and decided to go in, teach high school math. And she talked about what a challenge that was, going to an inner city school, um, high school math. She was really kind of disillusioned when she started. Um, and she found a blog of math teachers, and it was called One Good Thing. And every day, she would go into the blog and list one good thing from the day. And then she started sharing with her students, and her students started keeping records of one good thing. And she talked about what a positive, the positive thought that what a difference it made in her teaching career and what a difference it made for her students. And so I think of, you know, the Tell Me Something Good that Rush County is doing, and and the One Good Thing, she was very inspired and and talked about, this is the way to kind of turn around education. And so it was a great conference to go to, and I'm glad I had the opportunity.
Mrs. Martin, is that here?
Yep.
Anybody else to come before the board?
Mr. Rembaugh.
He wasn't listed, but I was gonna ask if he had anything to tell.
You don't recognize him.
He just showed.
I got a haircut, I could actually see the board.
How's the line dance going?
Excellent. Excellent, it's keeping me thin, not really. Um, so as you know, um, we've been working diligently this past month on backups. I just want everybody rest assured that we have all of our servers backed up one hundred percent. So that was a very slow process because of the amount of data that's being written, we didn't wanna slow the network down. So it was a very slow process getting it started from ground zero, but now that the data's written, it does nightly backups at three A M. So if at any time that one of our servers goes down or there's data loss, we have the ability to recover it on a daily basis and every change in between, every day. So rest assured, everything's good to go on that front. We did have a major fiber outage earlier this month. Um, I'd like to publicly thank Ron Jarman. Uh, we have now chaired central office, it was a fiber issue downtown, and it was a long time to isolate. Uh, without Ron's help, it probably would have taken three times what it did. There was about sixty seven hundred feet of fiber, and we had to isolate it down to where the problem was. Um, and since then, I've met with Ron, and he and I are coming up with a solution long term to beef up our fiber infrastructure between our buildings. Um, when he and I did our walkthrough, there's a bottleneck congestion from the high school to the middle school and elementary school because of the old fiber mess there. It has a manufacturer dated nineteen ninety eight. Tell fibers, I'm not saying that's when it was installed, the city owner was manufacturing. So basically, for future use, as we add layers of complexity to our network, we have to move our fiber more, otherwise we're gonna continue to be slowed down. Along with the radio project, he and I had a solution that's gonna be fairly quick on getting fiber to the Rushville Police Station, Rushville Police Station. Um, so we can get that project moving, but then in the future, probably this summer or next summer at the very latest, um, we'll be looking at beefing up our entire infrastructure and running a totally new fiber path. But we're gonna keep the existing fiber as redundancy. So in case something happens to the new fiber, if it gets cut, gets snipped, gets damaged in any way, we still have our network capacity we have now as a backup. So thinking forward and thinking about what bandwidth is gonna do in the next forty years, this is a once-in-a-lifetime expense for us because we're gonna pull more fiber than we need, because it's the labor of the installation that's expensive, not the actual wire itself. And the city, uh, and I are gonna work with Mill Drill, and they are extending us quite a deal for schools to get.
No, no.
So anyway, that's what we got.
Any other questions, discussions to come before we?
I got one thing I'd like to do, a shout out to the grounds and maintenance crew. Um, we were very blessed through a connection to um receive some desks, filing cabinets, chairs, brand-new stuff from our wonderful federal government, it's nice to get something back to the federal government. Uh, we had to do a little weight of time, but uh, this stuff's, I don't think it's ever been set behind, credentiahs and stuff. It was in a warehouse, they put brand-new stuff in, COVID hit, and they haven't been in there since, and then they disbanded that, so. Through some connections, we got this stuff donated to us and send up the maintenance and grounds crew to break it down, lift it, put it in a U-Haul and bring it back to us so that, I mean, a new desk's never been a two thousand, twenty-five hundred, and we got about twelve to fifteen of them free, so it was worth the effort, but shout out to those guys, they put in a really hard day's work. They got to stop and eat somewhere, but that, but it was, they got to work uh extremely hard and just appreciate their efforts. It wasn't their normal routine, so they worked it into their schedule, but this getting rid of being really busy with a lot of mowed grass and stuff, so. Any other questions?
Anything else to come before the board? Hearing that, I'll call for motions adjourned.
So move.